This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, our meeting will come to order. Mr. President, the meeting is coming to order.
Aye.
We have minutes from the last meeting. I'm gonna deny entry to autopilot there. That meeting was the 25th, right?
Yeah, I got this, too, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would like the motion to approve the minutes, please.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mayor is not here for mayor communication. Anybody in the public? I don't see any public online. Let's start with the supplemental appropriations then. New business. First up is the two new cruisers replacing... I have your cover letter here, Chief.
Yes, sir.
2016, which is $119,000, 2019, $146,000. These are full gasoline.
No.
These other two are.
No, they're... Oh, the two old, yes.
Yeah, they're gasoline. We're getting two hybrids, which will give us four hybrids in the fleet, right?
Yes.
And two fully electric.
Yes.
Which means you have six very climate-appropriate vehicles. I like the fact that we're using the Teslas as often as possible. I guess I understood from one of your officers that you've got them on patrol now. And I think anytime we can use them, it's better because that's why we got them. As much as we hate... I have to say, I'm not a Tesla fan, but I am a fan of electric vehicles. And any often we can use them, it's better for us. So having six units would mean more times than not we have them. And when they idle, they idle in electric mode, correct?
Correct, yes.
Which is so good because you have to keep your motors on in case you have a call. And we have the sign out front, "Don't idle." These are idling all the time, the gasoline vehicles. So all of this is good. I'm glad the mayor decided not to wait until we got different electric vehicles in. I know there might be one coming from Chevy, but that's down the road a couple of years, right?
That's my understanding as well.
All right, so last question, the only question I have is, are we trading these in or are we using them for something else? Somebody else?
No, we're not trading these in. Uh, no, we're not trading them into other departments. So we're not repurposing them like we had.
Well, yeah, we have repurposed.
Because objectively, particularly with the grants that we've been getting from conservation, the city actually has to part company with these gasoline vehicles.
Oh, okay.
So are they gonna be sold or auctioned?
Uh, we'll trade them in.
Okay.
We'll trade them in. What we do is we'll trade them into like a Marquette or an MHQ. And then we'll have pieces of parts, money sitting there for when stuff breaks. We can use them with the traded money to help repair other vehicles.
How many non-hybrid vehicles are electric what we have? We have six here. Do you still have other?
These are the last two, I believe.
Gasoline vehicles?
Full, yeah, yep.
What's the fleet consisting of?
Because we're getting rid of, yeah, two. So we have seven line cars, of which including these two, four of them have over 100,000 miles. So these are the last two that are fully gasoline.
So there's five that are electric or hybrid?
Right.
Four hybrids, two electric, yet six. So we still have one left that's...
No, there's five. There's two that are gasoline that are going out.
Right.
And then the five are either a hybrid or electric.
So what do we do... How many do you need in the fleet to run your operations?
At least seven line cars, which is why you really push it hard to get these two. Because I keep throwing good money at bad with repairs. I have one car that we're replacing, Car Five, is down in motor repair. It's been sitting there for a few months now. Because it just needs too much money and it's not worth putting money into.
Okay.
So you're technically down a vehicle, then?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is it there?
It's actually, I'm sorry, I'm down two. Because we're getting warranty work just underneath the $100,000 mark in Marquette. Getting, I wanna say it was a catalytic converter.
Who, which one? One of the hybrids?
One of the line cars, yeah. No, uh, yeah, one of the hybrids.
Still under warranty?
Just got in under the wire because the warranties are 100,000 miles. So majority of these cars are out of warranty.
Uh, okay. Any other questions? President Thomas?
I have a question. I'm just curious how to use. So the 2019 has 146,000 miles and the 2016, which is older, only has 119. Is that... I'm just curious, is that just different use or...
No, that's a great question. It's different, the... It's different use. The 2019 was... The 2019 is assigned to the three to 11 shift. So historically, that's our busiest shift.
Okay, yeah.
And so historically, those cars are going to call, to call, to call, to call. Whereas the 2016, because it's like the oldest car on the fleet, it wound up going to midnights the most part. And it was in the shop a ton. And so that one wouldn't get the same kind of mileage use. And we do move the cars around to try to avoid this, but sometimes it's just inevitable.
That's helpful for me to understand.
Okay, any other questions? With the motion to approve 159, 323,000 from Capital Stabilization Financial Software. I'm sorry, wrong one! 159, 317, 64 from Capital Stabilization for two new police cruisers.
Submissed.
Second.
Motion's the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Next week?
Counsel.
At counsel. And it is you.
Yes, yeah. In Dan's defense, well, the numbers are almost identical for the software and the group.
I know. I have a way out, but I need to breathe.
Like seven bucks.
All right, all right, we'll give it to him.
It is only, it's only $6!
We'll give it to him.
Thank you, counselors.
All right. Next thing is financial software. Why do we need this? Sounds good. Everybody's gonna be on the same page. Omar, because he's so knowledgeable now about everything you guys do. Inform me that this is KBS upgrade and everybody is using the same software and you're all happy. So I have to hear, okay. Seriously, you know, the financial team has to be on the same page. It makes it easy, efficient.
So with this, all the financial team people would be using the same software? And that's not currently the case?
Well, we are using the same software. When I came in, obviously, we were using a different software in Chickadee that is Munis that most, a lot of communities use. And I know before I started here, they had already kind of formed a software conversion group because this is sort of antiquated here, the KBS.
The old KBS.
Yes. And so we redid it and kind of looked at Munis and the upgrade for KBS Springbook. Of course, me coming from Chickadee, I was like, Munis, Munis, Munis. Hadel says it's more expensive, it's more expensive. And actually, the software, this financial software, the KBS upgrade Springbook is, has many more reports and is much more user-friendly than Munis is. And when Hadel had checked with other communities, there had been some issues with people going to Munis. So we have a good upgrade and it's less expensive and more user-friendly.
So I've been hearing the same thing, Munis, Munis, Munis. So this is good news. I'm happy you guys talk and Hadel won you over, I guess, from that. But it's, the proof is in the pudding. You look at the software, it does what you want it to do. Do we use this software for payroll, too?
Um, we will, yeah. We don't currently.
That seems to be the biggest thing you do every two weeks, payroll, I guess.
Yes, yes. And like I said before, we outsource it now. We input it and then basically send it to Harper's. They do all the printing, the W2s, the NIDs.
Will we in, we'll do it in-house now after this is done?
Yes.
Save some money from that? Saving money, we like to hear that.
See, Dan heard Munis, Munis, Munis. And what I heard was yay, Hadel, 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 right, for catching that.
But this whole thing started a year ago. We did a presentation or demo from four different vendors, or three maybe. And five then we decided we're gonna go with Munis. And, you know, then the whole staff changed. The whole treasurer department is a new department, so that was not the right time. This time again, we started moving into the software. Jessica and Nick from the school department came from Munis community. So last year, when we were doing the review, nobody was from the Munis community. So whatever looked more shinier, we would go with that. But it was expensive, too. But at the same time, with the benefits we were gonna get, we decided to move forward with it. But this whole change happened, so project was on hold. But then Nick and Jessica brought in some good experience from Munis community. And we said, and we just review one more time. They're okay, then we had demonstration for both. We took two Munis experts' opinion about it and they were like, this is much, much better. Because I don't work in Munis. And that's where we decided. And in the meantime, we learned that one of the community who projected $2.5 million project cost for this kind of conversion in Eastern Mass, after, I think it was 10 months, right? Yeah, 10 months, they decided to back off, make up from the project.
Like stopped in the middle of the conversion?
Yeah. Because the new Munis team or after COVID Munis team is not as supportive as others, so.
Well, we're only spending 159, not 2 million. This is cars!
Well, in comparison wise, if this is just the implementation and the one-year contract, the software contract, all the professional services and other costs will be a different cost. But we are not there yet, so it will be in the phases. This is just to get the foot into the door for the company. So we can get the live access, so we can fool around if we want.
And you'll have, the company's gonna come to help?
Yes.
Consult.
And so comparison wise, this is 159 for Service Cloud, which is KBS conversion. If you would have gone with Munis, we had 570,000 appropriation if needed. Even that up, the first appropriation would have been 570.
I like that here. Okay, as long as you guys are happy. Did I hear you say Nick was involved upstairs?
Of course.
So was KBS up there, too?
Yes.
That's good. All right.
And that, we're the only community, no, well. We were one of three communities in Massachusetts that suffered KBS. Now we are one of two communities with KBS.
Does that matter with regard to reports to the DOR? Does it matter what software you use?
As far as able to do it. Yeah, every town, every community is different with that.
Well, I know, so...
Even with the software.
All I'm saying is, if you guys are happy in East Tampa, I don't care if we're the only community using it. As long as you guys are happy and the DOR is happy, who else is there? IRS, we don't wanna talk to IRS. Besides, they lost money.
Actually, I just wanna say something. I know people get, can be working systems, they like those things, they don't like change. And I just wanna say I appreciate the professionalism that you all brought and the collaborative nature that you all brought to say, hey, what's gonna be best for the community? What's gonna be best for us to be able to work effectively? And so I just, I appreciate you all having an open mind to that and coming to the table to talk that through and figure out what was gonna be best for everybody. So I appreciate that.
Good.
The other person who played Hadel was Karen.
Oh, well, I was gonna say, I was the first to ask.
That's not surprising.
She was like, Munis?
No. Because she was hearing from her IT director, people, and was outing.
We always thought she was subtle.
Yeah.
No!
She's near my office.
All right, well, hey, if she says the one who said yes, you better fix it for her. All right, well, I have no other questions. Anybody, President? We have a motion for 159, 323. Should be taken out of Capital Stabilization for the financial software conversion for the Treasurer Audit Department.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Greg, is this you? You want a million dollars?
Yeah, that's me.
A million dollars. Just for the record, how much is left in retained earnings after we take the million out?
About $240,000, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay. And obviously, that gets us to the end of the fiscal year, so. Is that all we are required in the, to match for Department of Transportation's grant for this? Is a million?
It's about 1.17 million. With everything that we have to cover, that's not covered by MASH DOT. It's basically, the bulk of it is the water and sewer, sewer lining and water main replacement.
So the rest of the money, you're gonna cover from other sources?
Yes.
Well, I'm happy because that means we're not bonding yet.
Yeah, MASH DOT requires some contingencies to be built in there. So there is quite a bit of, that hopefully end up going back to retained earnings once the work's done. Hopefully, we don't need that, all the contingency that's built in, so.
Okay.
So this is, if I could just ask.
Sure.
So this is a, our part, our contribution to this is a million dollars. Is this a situation where there's refunds that come back to this and come back to the city as a, through this? Or is this just...
No, but well, the State Transportation Improvement Program does not fund water and sewer infrastructure improvements. Those have to be funded by the Enterprise Fund.
But they are funding the remainder of the construction of the street. And that's what, 12 million?
Yeah, everything else, it's about a $4 million project.
How about, how much?
$4 million.
$4 million? Okay. All right. Any other questions? Anybody? Omar? I'll take a motion to approve $1 million from Enterprise Retained Earnings to the Union Street Enterprise Project.
Submissed.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now I wanna talk revenue. Here we are. So just some questions, Hadel? So that we can make sure that the people understand what these things are. I know there's a lot that's in the cover letter.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Can I keep the bottom number for a second, please?
This?
Up? No. No.
What's the matter in here?
Those numbers are not updated after the findings which we had during our previous finance meeting.
How far off are they?
We are...
Is this thing getting all published? It looks like 100,000?
Okay, here's the thing. I don't need to have exact numbers to discuss what is a cherry sheet. I need the people to know what the exact numbers are. Well, obviously, Thursday, when it's, the city council's packet is done. Because we're voting on these next week. And the public needs to know that, and somehow, Omar, we should put a note in the budget on the website that the revenue has been amended.
Even budget?
Budget's been amended, too, because you're not balanced. Okay, if you put a note in, this is where the revenue has changed and this is where the budget has changed. It will help the counselors, it will help the people. These numbers that we're voting on, these are correct?
Yes.
They are?
Yes. So if you, yeah, if you see the first page on the sheet I gave you, the first column, the total at the very bottom, 52,302.
Yeah.
See how on the screen it says 52,231, 420?
So a little more, a little...
And that's less what we have to know, what we're about to discuss.
It's 52,302, not 52,231.
So you needed to find a little more revenue. How did you do that in this?
So I had an update from state budget. And the cushion which we normally keep, it's pretty low this year. So it is not considered this year as a conservative revenue approach budget.
So where, which one of these? The state cherry sheet money or...
Yeah, there's state cherry sheet money came a little bit more after House, Senate passed the budget. And the little wiggle room which I had in local aid, I increased that amount in there, so.
Okay, so these numbers here, local aid, cherry sheet, all this stuff will change slightly to reflect more current state appropriations.
Yes.
Which is something I wanted to ask. Every year, we conservatively estimate based on the governor's presentation. And then the state decides at the last minute to pass their budget. And all of that extra revenue, let's say we got more. If you conservatively budget the revenue and it's less what you hoped for, you don't wanna be in deficit.
Yeah.
Then all that extra revenue goes to free cash?
Yes.
Okay.
But this year's budget, 2025, free cash is gonna be significantly low.
Well, yeah, we didn't have all those chargebacks to federal money, you know, we did, for sure.
That, that was totally separate.
I know, but that's how we made more free cash. There you go. Local aid, is that where chapter 90, chapter 70 money is hidden?
No, chapter 90, just chapter 70, charter reimbursement, school choice, unrestricted local aid, veterans' benefits, state-owned land, elderly line exemptions and public library money goes.
Is that in the budget someplace?
Wait, that's offset. Local aid is the general fund revenue, sorry. Where all of our motor vehicle excise tax, local other taxes, penalties, fees, rental, departmental revenue, license and permits, fines, investments, go. That's where the local aid comes from.
Is that broken down someplace?
Yes.
In the budget? Some broken down in the budget, I couldn't find it.
I, I do know the revenue budget was uploaded here by a chance.
Could you just, for my purposes, just send that to me? I don't need...
Do you have your email address now?
Yeah.
If you see, I just forwarded you the email. You open.
Here. This one?
No, I just, yes, so if you... No. If you go back to your inbox.
He sent me those motions.
If you wanna try and refresh, a second.
How do I refresh?
Click up here. Yep, you can do that, too.
Hadel, revenue?
Yes.
There it is.
Okay, now we have it.
Make that bigger.
I just sent you her email, too.
Yourself?
Just now, so if you refresh the screen, I should...
Okay, Hadel, we got it now.
Yeah. So if you go onto page two. Yeah, so the first section is the, is the local aid.
Thank you. Okay.
And the far right column is for 2024. And that's where 2023 estimates and 2022 comparisons are in the middle.
Okay.
Do you want hard copy?
No. I don't think.
Come.
Oh, you have a witness?
Yes, I do.
Okay, that's a good...
No.
Well, okay. I think we ought to try to publish these before the council vote. We don't vote on revenue, we vote on the motions.
Balance budget.
It has to have a balance, so...
But even the expense side is, needs update, so, I mean... Oh, Lindsay's on the call, so she would be able to.
All right. I'll let you do that. The motions that you sent me tonight are exact, though.
Yes, those are reflecting the actual numbers.
Can I, where's chapter 70 coming here?
Right at the top, right then.
In the second block, first line. Cherry sheet.
So we got almost 345,000 or something additional chapter 70? You're pretty sure we're gonna get that next year? It says right here, look at this figure here, look at this screen.
Yeah, that's from the budget, which House passed.
Okay.
Or the Senate passed.
Well, that's good.
Those are the exact numbers.
But we based our school appropriation on that. The budget.
Yeah. That, the expense budget is the expense budget.
I understand that. No, what I'm saying is, chapter 70 money has to go to education. It doesn't just, that's a question. It doesn't just go in the general fund. It has to go to education.
It's just we don't have to raise and appropriate.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, okay.
That's a question, yeah. So I'm just, all these numbers. So on the, on this, on this.
Yeah.
It says local aid.
Yeah.
13 million through 259, blah, blah, blah. But on this, if I understood correctly, this is the local aid right here? But I only see 4 million this...
4.9.
Yeah, so how does, how do I get to 13?
Please, when you're looking at, can I see that?
Yeah.
Are you looking at the budget itself?
I wanna see it over here.
Yep, so local aid.
Up here, are you looking, look at what I have?
53, yeah. So it's 13 million, whatever. But I don't, where is 13 million on this sheet? I don't understand that. Am I supposed to be adding something?
Receipts, the chair, the state receipts. So see this one here? The state receipt?
Ah, okay, so then, okay. Oh, so this right here, here, is this overdue or somewhere?
No, so this one is the state budget.
Uh huh.
So if I can explain this by section by section for a second, it will clear.
All right, which, which one do you want up? This thing?
Yes, please.
First page?
Yes. So this whole revenue budget is broken down into five sections. The first section is the tax levy. Second section is the cherry sheet. Third section is the local receipts. The fourth section is enterprise funds. And other sources are the other funding sources to support the budget. Tax, the first section, it's pretty standard. It's a formula from the state, prior year level limit, add 2.5% increase, add any new growth. If you have any... if you have any overrides, which doesn't apply to us, and the true levy limit is twenty-seven point seven million and change. And then we also have debt exclusion on the school building and I think on the high school. So whatever is, we need to pay for debt on those two debt exclusion is, is included here. And premiums, by accounting rules, you use it as a revenue, so that needs to be reduced. And three hundred thirty thousand, we include it as an overlay which is, um, for any kind of abatements given on real estate or personal property. So we just have a reserve, um, under overlay.
In case somebody asks for an abatement of taxes.
So senior work tax...
Assessors approve it.
Yes. So senior work tax off also comes out of that line, um, as an abatement. So that's the first section, so we can collect legally revenue, tax revenue up to thirty point five, point seven million dollars and change. The second group is the cherry sheet sheet, which is a net, net of the receipts and assessment, so it reflects the state budget. Whatever they give us as a revenue, but they also take, uh, charges and that's the offset which is coming in the bottom, offset to the receipt. And it's in and out because we do peril, like expense and revenue doesn't cross the line. That's why all the cherry sheet revenues are on the top section and the bottom section is the assessment. When receipt comes in through treasurer office, what they do is they put receipt as a negative number because accounting works oppose it. And they also put it as a expense onto the receipt book to make sure that everything is captured the way we present it in the budget.
And you estimate the charters and, uh, school choice and charter school sending tuitions based on last year, conservatively?
No, so this, these are the numbers came from, uh, state budget.
Oh, they come from state budget for our community?
For our community. Yes, those numbers are not any of my numbers. Normally, what I would do, the first section of the cherry sheet, I usually see, do the comparison from last three years. Whatever is the lo, the lower amount, that's what I would estimate to keep it conservatively, but because of the way budget is this year, I just took what they proposed for twenty twenty-four at this point. There is no wiggle room in this either, so.
So this blue number here, school choice tuition, that's from the state?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's cherry sheet. And then local receipt is all the, like, motor vehicle taxes, excise taxes, um, any other like room tax, uh, we get marijuana tax on this, um, interest income, fees, rentals or like license and permit, so liquor license revenue goes in there, revenue collected by police department, fire department, clerk, all those, uh, local revenues are part of this, uh, this section. Then what enterprise receipt is, um, the collection from water and sewer. This also, this is the total of the enterprise budget plus indirect cost. The chargeback which we charged to enterprise fund, so that's the total. So that's why, if you see on this report here, enterprise budget is two point nine million, point ten. But because there is indirect cost included, that's why it's four point six million. The one thing which I do want to, um, bring it onto the table for this year's enterprise receipt, we are, if we go by the actuals, what we have right now, we are in, in deficit by, not deficit, we are short by half a million dollar. But because, um, the board of, uh, public works has approved the rate increase, I was able to talk with our D R rep and make sure that if I upload the vote and show the actual usage as of June thirtieth, times the new rate, as long as I can come up with this amount at least, it won't need to be raised and appropriated on tax rate. And we are covered with that because I took the actuals as of May. So we still have some wiggle room there. But if, let's say, they would have not increased the water sewer rates, we would have to support enterprise fund out of general fund, meaning raising on our tax rate recap for that deficit.
But we won't have a deficit as far as, so.
This year we are fine. But we, we'll see how twenty-five and twenty-six goes.
Anybody have any questions as we're going to work here? Thank you for all of this.
Yeah, and the first section is other sources, so CPA is self-supporting, um, then, um, the debt, premium, sale of lot, parking receipts. We all do this work, but it's, uh, the parking receipt money goes into the revolving account, but the work has been done by collector's office, that's why it's, it's kinda offset, setting their budget and it's on the far right column, it says parking funds. And the proportion amount, um, we have three positions, actually. Arpa funding, we have, um, IT department, um, office manager, she's part-timer, her position is funded through Arpa. Engineer, uh, chief engineer, his ten hours is funded through Arpa. Um, and I don't know the title of, um, what's Hail's title? Principal clerk in mayor's office, her position is funded through, uh, Arpa too. And social workers position is funded through Arpa, so that's what's adding up to one fifty.
And when they go away in a couple of years, we're gonna have to fund them some more.
Yes.
So, just for the public's sake, we moved from free cash money into tax rate stabilization of four hundred thousand dollars earlier this year, didn't we not?
It's, I'll, I'll get to that in a second if that's okay.
Oh, okay, I was gonna ask you, I, I like this, all right.
Yeah. Uh, E C A donation is a, um, it's for Pasqualinas from planning department. Cannabis stabilization, twenty-three thousand dollars is for, uh, planner bags, uh, salaries because their department was affected the most. Formula grant, uh, money is coming from council on aging and that's how they're gonna support the grant funded position, but we are just putting everything into one umbrella, so we know what exactly our budget looks like. And four hundred thousand dollars, I think we put this year, not four hundred.
We have something there.
Yes, we had a hundred and fifty left from last year. Plus whatever we put this year, um, original plan was to put two hundred thousand dollars, but seeing budget being so tight, mayor agreed to put in four hundred thousand out of the stabilization account.
You mean, from free cash into the stabilization?
It's already in the stabilization account, so from stabilization account to support the budget.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pleased with that, it means we're using last year's kind of, correct me if I'm wrong, surplus, putting it back into stabilization and using it to support the budget.
To support the taxation side, yes.
The taxation, and that keeps the rates, well, in any case, we have a two and a half percent increase, right? But four hundred thousand of it is balanced by this.
Yes.
To me, that's excellent, it means we're trying to give back. That's how I, I register this.
So there is one, one more point to this, um, the reason we have this tax rate stabilization is because of the debt, debt exclusion on the New Mountain School. That's where the whole purpose of setting up the tax rate stabilization was like, we're gonna have a bigger amount when we do the close-up this, this year. So, again, twenty twenty-five budget is gonna be different with respect to that exclusion.
Mayor?
Um, I would say the, you know, uh, the actual impact on the two and a half percent increase on, uh, on our tax rate, then of course is lessened by that percent. So you've had a couple of years in the past when we started this where the two and a half percent actually goes down to like one point six five and then there are other costs, so it's, it's a, it's a really interesting tool, especially when we're looking at the bonding, we have, um, an interest before us and it's, it's helped us keep within range, I mean.
Well, we never had it. I think we started this like three years ago, four years ago, whenever we started the bonding. I, I would never had a tax rate stabilization account in all my years and it's an excellent tool. Helps the taxpayers. Anything else on the revenue? Okay. Let's talk about how we're gonna do the votes. Hail just gave us these, all I want to do, I'll give you an example, okay? You have these? It's a motion to approve section one, general government, the amount of two million, eight hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred five dollars, be sent to the council for approval. That's all I wanna say, I don't wanna say the rest of this stuff. Because that's primarily for the full council vote. Is that a vote, meet your approval, Mr. President? I think it's just the bottom line that we need to vote. We're gonna do all of this in the motions at the meeting.
Yes, with the request of having the revised vote, yes, you must consider.
Well, yeah, well, that's separate than the... So our numbers, all of this, we need to get it to Barbara to publish it. Number one on the website and number two, to give it to the full council. Any changes, it would be great, the numbers changed here in the budget, just point to where they changed and here in the revenue. So they understand how we rebalanced, okay? Problem? We need to, we need to be, we need to give the public, or at least the city council, they need to know what, why do the numbers change? It's about a three hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollar change, right? They just told us this.
Right, no, I'm not saying they don't, but we have to include, I don't know, in the past years, I guess I'll just say straight, we've gone through department by department in revenue and there have been changes for various reasons, sometimes we've gotten something, sometimes the math or the rounding, and when we walk into the vote, that the budget is as the votes recommended. Like, the vote is as you vote, like you looked at it and that's why we're waiting to vote.
Okay, but we need to send at least the council the amended
Yeah.
Budget.
I mean, there's a memo that will go with the budget that says, we, I'm, it's apartment, not a salary, I'm trying to think of one of it. It's one of the things that we needed to add back in and take out.
Whatever the changes were, even if they're minimal, just let the...
The engineers out.
Let the engineer, let, let the council know, because we have, you're right, we've amended the budget
Right.
and voted on it at the night of this, we've done this before where these numbers have changed slightly. But we need to let them know how that was, the council.
Thank you, someone have a question?
Yes, and then they, they may have a question, is why is it fifty-two million and what's two whatever? Like you pointed out the bottom line table where they changed, so.
Right. Yes.
So if it's all right, I'm good to go through each of these. I'll take a motion to approve the general government as submitted by the mayor. The general government budget as submitted by the mayor for two million, eight hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred five dollars and ten cents.
Submitted.
Second.
You're okay with writing these up?
I'm working on it, yeah.
Any further discussion? Any none?
I've, I've got it.
Oh.
Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public safety, any discussion before I take the motion? Uh, a motion would be from the finance committee to approve, to send to the full council, the public safety budget as, as submitted by the mayor of seven million, three hundred eighty-two thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-four cents.
Submitted.
Second.
So this is what I discussed earlier. I make, I am going to ask that a motion be made to withhold approval for the education school budget, until which time as the negotiation for the E L L program has been, brought forward and has been successful. So the finance committee will not send a recommendation to the full council at this time. That's what I want to do.
We have a meeting tomorrow.
While we're voting tonight, I don't wanna vote until...
You want to let the public know that we're gonna amend the vote?
Well, I'm making, I'm making everybody know that we're, we're waiting on that negotiation. And a word from the negotiators that we're good to go. So that's the motion.
Submitted. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve the mayor's budget for public works of two million eight, sorry, two million, eighty-one thousand, nine hundred fifty-four dollars and ninety-one cents.
Submitted.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the mayor's, to send to the full council for approval, the mayor's recommended budget for human services, nine hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars and forty-six cents.
Submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve, to send to the full council for approval, the mayor's recommended budget of cultural and recreation for seven hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars.
Submitted.
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
A motion to send to the full council for approval, the mayor's recommended debt and interest budget of four million, eight hundred twenty-four thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Section eight, motion to send to the full council for approval, the unclassified uh, budget as submitted by the mayor of ten million, eight hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars and nine cents.
Submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to send to the full council for approval, the mayor's recommended budget for the community preservation, uh, section of the budget of eight hundred thirty thousand.
Subject.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Section ten, uh, enterprise, to send to the, uh, full council for approval, the mayor's recommendation for the enterprise budget of two million, nine hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars.
Submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I need to read this volun cap thing at the, at the budget hearing? Are you going to the city council cap the D P W revolving fund?
So that is, um, the electric...
Electric D P W?
Yes, which we have to adapt it because it expires on June thirtieth.
So that's something I'll read at the...
And we will need a motion to...
That's the motion.
But we need to make that.
They do, not, they want us to do it after here, I guess, right, you do it here? The last thing, though, D P W...
D P W's, um, electric vehicle trading station bikes revolving account, which has a cap for twenty thousand. We have to, um,
I just...
renew the cap every year?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I'll, I'll move that, our motion that we move, set the revolving fund cap for twenty twenty-four, for, at twenty thousand dollars for the D P W revolving fund.
Submitted.
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.